We're ready to adopt the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the agenda as presented.
A second? Any discussion? Ready to vote. So we are now ready for school highlights.
This is one of our favorite times. Good evening. This is one of our favorite times of the board meeting is to be able to celebrate and acknowledge our staff, students, and others that are with us. So we are going to start off with, normally we start off with some of our staff members. We know that our young people have homework and other things that they have to do. So this person is special because they have won the attendance award not once, not twice, not three times, but four times, which is really a record. So I'd like to ask the marvelous Sarah Lucero to come up. So many people here, I'm not sure that I can see her right off. Is it Ms. Lucero in the space? And the Scott Dual Language staff members that are here, and the students from Scott Dual Language, can you please come forward? The March Student Attendance, she had 97 percent. So the traveling trophy goes to Scott Dual Language. Can we get it? Turn it over to Ms. Lucero to any comments, or to have any staff or students, any comments that they'd like.
Good evening, School Board. Good to see you. I am very excited. The students you'll see here have perfect attendance, and it's always so great to see their faces at school every day. However, our school has won a few times. And I was just asking them, how do you do it? I would really like to share that magic, and I think this award should be received in honor of Ms. Marshall over here. And she does not like the attention. But I will tell you, when I first started at that school, right away she stood out to me. And I told her, she's just like our own little miracle worker every day. And so the students know that, and the families know that she is part of our magic that makes it happen. She makes it a positive thing for us to be at school, what do you say? Makes it exciting. We win prizes in our classroom, and teachers get to wear crowns. So I'd really like to thank her as well, and all the students.
Are there any other comments, one from our students about attendance that you'd like to say? And I'll pass on the microphone. If anybody wants to say anything about owning the school or perfect attendance, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Lucero. Are there any closing comments that you would like to mention? Anybody burning to say anything?
I love going to Scott because it teaches me how to learn English. I never knew, I only knew Spanish before, and now I know perfect English. So I love going to.
All right, and we're going to ask our students to be sure to remain here as well. So when we conclude this portion, we'll take a five-minute break and take a photo. Ms. Lucero, I'll turn it back over to you to wrap one up, and to make sure, have you introduced all of the adults as well, and make sure that each student has their name?
Yes, okay. And then we have Ms. Reynoso, who is our Community Schools Person. And she is amazing at helping provide families with anything that might need, any barriers to help get our kids to school, support, transportation, you name it. So she's also another angel in our building. And then if all the students will introduce your name and say your grade?
Rogelio, and I'm in fourth grade.
Mariah, and I'm in fourth grade.
First, first grade, Shaila.
Maggie, and I'm in first grade.
Karen, I'm in fourth grade.
Vanessa, I'm in fifth grade.
Kathy, and I'm in fifth grade.
I love it because Reynosa just asked me if I'm also the lunch teacher. So I would see how that would seem like I'm the lunch teacher. So could I have Kathy and Vanessa come over here, please? I also want to introduce you to them because they're our fifth graders that are going on our proposed trip to Puerto Rico. They have worked really hard for this and want to have that opportunity. So would you like to say a few remarks about what it means for you to go to Puerto Rico as fifth graders?
It's a great opportunity for us to learn the foreign language culture.
I think it's great because it can be one in a lifetime, an eternity. So it's good.
And her father is in the audience, and I love it because he said, you know, for us, it's not a language thing as much as a culture experience for her to have that. So since she already comes from a Spanish-speaking home, going to another Spanish-speaking country, but a different one than from where her family's at, it's a wonderful opportunity for our students.
Give them another applause. And thank you, Ms. Lucero and team. So hang around for just a few minutes, parents, because we will take a photo with our students and their award and with our staff. We're getting ready to do the next award. I know that's really heavy, but if you take it all the way back that way, and follow your teachers, or follow your principal. Good stuff. All right, moving right along. After our attendance awards for our students, we also want to acknowledge all of the beautiful purple that is in the audience. That would be our Topeka West Bowling Team. I'd like to ask for the bowling coach, Mike Thompson, to come forward. And is Mr. Dick here this evening?
No, I'm here.
All right. There you go. All right.
I'm not Mr. Dick, I'm Mr. Mariano.
I'm going to turn it over to our Topeka staff and our coach to say a few words, and then to bring our bowling team, why don't we bring the bowling team right on up as well?
All right. This was obviously a great year for Topeka West Bowling. Both of our teams qualified for the state tournament. Our girls' team was one of only two teams at the state tournament to actually bowl better than their season average. They went into the state tournament, seeded ninth out of the 12 teams, and finished fourth. And the girls' bowling team included Jessica Sandrin, raise your hand so they can know which one it was, Merrick Gilbreth, Ashley Wilson, Ana Sanchez Day, Hadley Overstreet, and I'm going to have Michaela Cowden step out front. Michaela was our only senior on the team this year. She placed fourth individually at state, and she is also, was on our 2015 state championship women's team. So congratulations, Carl. And you can follow Michaela next year. She'll be bowling at Ottawa University. Our boys' team was seeded number one all year, from the very first meet of the year all the way through. They were the number one ranked team in the state across all six classifications, 87 teams. And came to state, and with two Baker games to go, they were down by 147 pins, which, to put it in other terms, if you were playing basketball, you'd be down 20 points with three minutes to go. And they came back and won. I'd like to say it was good coaching. But the boys got together, the six of them, they kicked me out of the huddle. I have no idea to this day what they said, and I don't think I want to know. And they promptly came out and shot a 275 game, which made up 135 with 147 pins that they were down. And so the bowling team, we had two juniors, and I'm going to introduce them first. The first one, Austin Blazer. The second one, I'm going to mess up his name, Cody Mijipeno. Close, close. And we have four seniors, three of whom are going to bowl next year at the college level. The first one is Dylan Tidwell. And I've got to recognize Dylan, he only had one 600 series this year, and it was at state. And he placed, was it seventh at state? Next up is Jared Freed. Jared will be bowling next year at Ottawa University, and Jared is a second-team All-State bowler. And we have Adam Wood. And Adam will be bowling next year at Newman University, which is one of the top five programs in the country. And Adam's a four-time All-State selection, two-time first team, two-time second-team All-State. And last but not least is Jordan Freed. And Jordan was a first-team All-State, plays fourth individually this year at state, and he'll be bowling next year at Ottawa University.
And I'd like to also comment on these kids and their grades. They are outstanding students in the classroom as well. They can't do what they do without having wonderful grades. And the college scholarship shows that, because colleges wouldn't look at them if they didn't have outstanding grades. I can't be prouder of them on the grade side. They're outstanding students.
I'm going to present this to you in recognition of the bowling team, your success this year. We know for years to come, we probably present a certificate of congratulations. We do ask you to stay around for a few minutes, because we want to take a picture with the entire group. So we'll call you back after about five minutes. Great teams also are part of great coaching. Excited about having our very own, again, Topeka West, you see a lot of purple in the audience, our Kansas Teacher Hall of Fame inductee, Melanie Ralston. Ms. Ralston, can you please come forward? And I guess Topeka West administration needs to come back forward in place of Mr. Dick. I had the pleasure of coming to her class and giving her flowers and acknowledging her. And what's unusual is this is normally after someone retires, but she's still here working. In fact, she said, oh, you can teach a classroom, go on. I said, no. You are beloved by your students. It is certainly a privilege to have you on the team, and to give you some rewards.
Again, I'm the athletic director, but I taught next to this woman for almost 20, almost 30 years before I took over the A D job. And it's amazing, the classroom, the way she keeps her kids, the way her kids are, well, respect her as a teacher. I had three boys that went through her speech classes, and they were very, very appreciative of what benefits her classes gave them as they moved on through their career. So I can't say enough about Mrs. Ralston. She's also guided me as an instructor throughout the many years that we've worked together. We've kind of gone back and forth. So it's a true pleasure to have this honor from Mrs. Ralston tonight.
Several of my students are here, so they're like, let's see if you can do what you told us to do for the year. I want to thank the board. And I know that one of the hallmarks of getting this award is the recognition that you get as an individual. But I think that what a lot of people forget is that to be able to accept this particular award, you have to have a lot of people that have come before you. Pam Akomas is the one, actually was my mentor, teacher, when I student taught in 1983. And that was at Topeka High School. And then I found it kind of interesting, because when I applied for my first job, which was here in 501, they didn't really want to hire me, because their philosophy was, we don't like to hire new teachers, we like to hire teachers with experience. And so it took a little bit convincing for them, and on my part, to say, why don't you just take a chance and see what happens? And so that's when I started my tenure at Topeka West High School. I never thought it would be my last job, but it will be, and I guarantee you that. But at the same time, these students are a testament to what I get to experience every day, which is a joy. My colleagues are a pleasure to work with. I've survived many principals since 1984. I think there's only three pictures on the wall of A Building of principals that I have not worked for in the time that I've been at Topeka West. And because of all of that is what allows us to grow, not only as teachers, but also as people, and also as a school. So I feel really privileged to represent Topeka and USD 501. And I also feel even more privileged to represent the students that we have had go through our classrooms, too. So I thank you very much.
And I believe Topeka Public Schools has had the largest number, am I correct, Mrs. Kurgor, of teachers that have been inducted into the Hall of Fame. In fact, Mrs. Ralston is the 19th teacher to be inducted into the Kansas Hall of Fame. And at this time, we are going to do our proclamation for Week of the Young Child. And I'd like to ask someone, generally, we have someone from the audience to come up. And do we have a kindergarten teacher or first-grade teacher in the audience who would like to come up to do the Week of the Young Child? Well, Ms. Padola is in the audience, and you teach at McClure. And while you are not a kindergarten teacher, you are an instructional coach that works with kindergarten, first, second, and all other grades. And so I would ask that you, if you'd like to read the first couple of sentences and the last few sentences, but this week is the Week of the Young Child. That is really every day. I think our principals, our teachers can attest to that. But we'll start off with our proclamation unless Mrs., I'm sorry, Sarah Sharp is actually here this evening. But she's not, Ms. Sharp, are you in this space? There are so many people that you're out in the, oh, there you go. Thank you, though, for being willing. All right. Come on up, Ms. Sharp, the first few sentences, the last few sentences, any items you'd like to say?
Whereas children are an important part of our future, and whereas the early years of poor children's learning in all aspects of development are important, and whereas parents, early childhood educators, and allied professionals, business leaders, community leaders, and the public at large are asked to make the early years the best they can be for all children. And we are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 16 through 20.
Thank you. And at this time, we'd like to take a five-minute break for our
So we are ready to do business by consent. Ready for a...
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented, and authorize the board president or the superintendent to sign a special project on purchase and contracts for an A D S report.
A second? I know we have discussion on this.
Just briefly, I, two things on the donation section. I noticed that the state's received some alternative seating money for Ms. Robertson's fourth-grade class. Are those stand-up desks?
Actually, Ms. Robertson is here, and she can give you a brief rundown. She is working on her building leader license, and so she is attending tonight. So I will let this right practice.
I follow a physical therapist on Twitter, and I, and he's an advocate of stand-up desks in especially elementary schools. And I'm just curious to know if this is...
So I don't use the stand-up desks, but we use wobble chairs. So a lot of my students have a lot of trauma in their backgrounds. So like, they wiggle a lot, and they want to move a lot while we're working. So I did a Donors Choose project and asked for five additional wobble chairs. I already brought two, and we got one from the school, so.
So explain to me what a wobble chair is.
So basically, it's got like the foundation, it just kind of looks like a stool, but the base moves. So when you're sitting, you can kind of rock back and forth. So it kind of allows like my students with A D, or like just who can't sit and focus, it just kind of allows them to move, but still be able to work at the same time.
Old guys like me would fall over, though, probably, isn't that...
I mean, it happens here and there, but it helps, so.
Thank you for submitting that. The second component on the consent is I'm grateful for my employer donating some money. And on my behalf, because I log my volunteer hours, and so I make an explanation based on how many hours I volunteer. Since our board meetings have become shorter, I don't, they don't give as much money as they used to. The payoff, I guess, we're glad I made. But so I'm grateful for my employer for that.
See, also on the agenda is purchase and sale agreement for Kansas property to Calamar Inc. with Calamar. People like to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I would, Mr. President and rest of the board, like to talk a little bit about this transaction that is on the consent agenda. We have engaged in negotiations that have resulted in sale of approximately six and a half acres of property that is located at our Kansas Education and Science Park to Calamar. Calamar will be using that property to erect a senior independent living complex. This complex will be composed, comprised of 132 units, one and two-bedroom, as large as two-bedroom, two-bath units, 130,000 square feet, three-story. It will have some garage units associated with it, as well as parking facilities for about 80 to 90 automobiles. You know, whenever we sell property to another organization out of Kansas, one of the things that we make sure, that we stress, is that that organization should have a partnership with Topeka Public Schools in a way that it provides some unique educational opportunities for our kids. And this is no different from any other transaction that we've entered into. Calamar is willing to provide those educational opportunities. And before I go any further, I'm going to allow their representative, Mr. Jerry Hill, who is their Director of Development for the Midwest region, talk a little bit more about Calamar, and about this particular contract and transaction with Topeka Public Schools, and what it means going forward, both for their organization and also for our school district. Mr. Hill?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Again, I'm Jerry Hill with Calamar. Calamar is about 30 years old, headquartered in Brookfield, New York, which is just outside Buffalo. For about the last almost 20 years, the company has been involved in locating, designing, building, operating senior independent living communities all across the country. We have eight operating here in the Midwest area, and we have four more that are currently under development here in the Midwest. Calamar does not, Calamar's never sold a property. We maintain them, we operate them. We stress lifestyle, and our buildings, while there's independent living, there's, just for an example, the building here would have a theater, a community room, a lounge, a library, a salon, a billiard room, a serenity yoga room, a chapel, a fitness center, education room, lots of lifestyle kinds of things. We say that we don't sell bricks and sticks, we sell a lifestyle. We are very, very excited about this project. In fact, I was in a meeting yesterday, our senior management and the senior person that's in charge of operations was telling our CEO that this project would become our flagship property. All of our communities do things, in almost all cases, with the school district. And we could talk about, there's lots of possibilities, but the opportunity to enhance that, this intergenerational, and then to provide a place that retirees of the district have an opportunity to live on that campus and interact with students just provides a wealth of opportunities for us to make a community that's such a positive for the residents that live there. So we're very excited about it, and look forward to moving forward. I think I'd answer any questions anybody has.
Dr. McCarthy?
Thank you so much. This is so exciting for us as a board, and to see the payoff to the district when we made the decision years ago to buy this property. What has come to pass is just been amazing. And we consider this to be part of that. I just wanted to highlight two things. And one was maybe explaining a little more about what those educational opportunities might look like for students, if there's some things that Calamar has done elsewhere. They've had resident-student partnerships, they've had students participate in writing the oral histories of the residents, they've had participation or leadership of computer lab training and usage for our seniors, participation in the nationwide Skype programming for health and wellness, allowing students to provide technical assistance to residents, performance opportunities for theater or speech squads, right? We could also do that with our musical groups, tutoring of students by residents who have that expertise to offer, programming for residents relative to the district's sporting events. They're going to be right there on the property and be able to be part of our cheering community for our student athletes. Internships for students interested in working with the aging population, and that goes very well hand-in-hand with the opportunities we've been developing with Midland Hospice as well, on the same property. The other thing I want to highlight is some of the benefits that are going to come to our retirees. And did you want to...
That's fine.
Mention any of those, yeah. So Topeka Public School retirees are going to be given first crack at these units. And any opening incentives or discounts will be extended for their benefit, and they'll even receive one month of free rent in their first year. So this is also meant to be something that benefits our retirees as well as our current staff.
Any further questions? Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to also echo my sentiments about this, echo what Dr. McCarthy said. I'm incredibly excited. I also want to add this agreement. I remember also, four of us were on the board at the time when we made that decision. And you'll recall, at the depths of the recession, it was not that popular a decision to have made. While it was the right thing to do, because we were landlocked, and if we ever wanted additional opportunities for our students to go out and do things that are going to make them college and career-ready, we needed to make that move. But it took courage, and I certainly want to commend our administration and our board for taking that step. I'm really excited when I look at this specifically. I think of our C and E program, our partnership that we've got, and all of the things we're doing around the health sciences. I can just see some of our students getting a chance to get some real world experience with residents right now, or residents then. And, you know, perhaps we develop this flourishing, a beautiful community of healthcare professionals who work today and work in Topeka. That's just one. So I certainly want to thank the administration and Dr. Williams, especially. Thank you very much for really putting our vision into action. If we could not do any of these things, we would have...
Ms. Kurgor?
Just for those of you who are sitting out there with no idea where on the Kansas property is, because they're planning to go, if you all remember where the tower building was, those of you who have lived in Topeka a while, it's in that area, where this is going to go. So it's a beautiful area, lots of trees. There will be hiking trails, there are walking areas now, there's a pool over there, an auditorium for people. I mean, it's a great place for active and mobile seniors. So I'm glad to have you all there.
I've already been on site with our construction people, telling them that they can't take down those trees.
Yes, they have to put things around them. Those trees are, they're actually, a lot of them have come from all over the country, all over the world. So, yeah. But I mean, it is amazing. It's a proud land out there, and we are so proud of what has transpired. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So we are, any further discussion? We're ready to vote. We're ready to vote. We are now ready for superintendent's report.
At this time, we're asking Mrs. Sharp to come forward. The video that is preparing to start is a video celebrating not only the Week of the Young Child, but also celebrating our early childhood enrollment, which is off to a great start. So as we go to that video, thank you so much, Mr. Hanson, for going to that next slide in that video. So we're going to kick this off with the video. Ms. Sharp will introduce who is with her, will start the video, and then she'll give you a brief update about enrollment and answer questions. Ms. Sharp?
I'm going to.
You want to make introductions?
Yes. Again, I am Sarah Sharp, current principal at State Tree Elementary School and lead elementary principal, and I'm looking forward to on July 2nd beginning as Director of Early Childhood and Elementary Education. I am really excited tonight to introduce you to Ms. Jennifer Norton, who will be principal at Sheldon and Pinewood Prep.
I just want to say thank you to the board and Dr. Anderson, Ms. Wallace, and Mr. Robbins, and Ms. Sharp for giving me this opportunity. I'm super excited and have already been studying and reading and all kinds of things on my spare time. But anyway, I just want to thank you, and I'm looking forward to continuing this great preschool that's already been developed and just continuing on that right path.
And also joining us tonight is Ms. Cassie Neufeld, and she is starting in July as Head Start Compliance Coordinator, but she has already been coming in, in the afternoons, one or two days a week to begin learning.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you so much for this opportunity, and I can't wait to get started. Education for over twenty years, and what I see that really works is getting students at a very young age to be successful. Our goal is to provide more of that early education for our students. Research has shown that when we can have a solid foundation, birth to age five, then the students are going to be more apt to be successful as they continue on through elementary, middle school, and high school.
I have a passion for serving the families within the Topeka Public Schools community. The 2018-2019 school year, Topeka Public Schools will be opening the Shanner Early Childhood Center. This will have fifteen classrooms where we will be able to service over two hundred students. This opening of the Shanner Center will help alleviate some of that waitlist and provide another option for families that would like to have more of an education setting for their children.
Topeka Public Schools has really been innovative in the implementation of trauma-informed care, instructional best practices, and ensuring that our students are getting a positive educational experience.
Topeka Public Schools is a great place to work for any educator at any level. What I appreciate about Topeka Public Schools is that if you are an early childhood teacher, you are able to collaborate with so many other early childhood professionals at your same level, and a lot of other districts don't have that opportunity for those preschool teachers, because Topeka Public Schools wants to grow strong teachers to help their students become successful.
We wanted to just provide an update on where we are at with our enrollment. We've been working, the online application is up and running on the district website. Families, patrons can go on, click that link, share their information, and we have an enrollment coordinator at Sheldon who goes through all of those applications, looks at qualifiers, and places the students in programs. She's got a big job, and she's amazing at it. We are communicating to our patrons through community newsletters, through flyers out in different agencies across the community, using social media, and different community events, definitely utilizing parents as teachers to help promote our early childhood programs. This shows you where we are at with our current enrollments. The state pre-K slots, we have one hundred and sixteen of the two hundred and four slots placed and ready. Sheldon, we're at eighty-nine of the two hundred and ten spots. Sheldon has, or excuse me, Pinewood Prep, we're at twenty-two of the fifty-one slots. Shanner, we are working with the Communications Department to be intentional with recruiting some tuition spots. Again, Communications Department has worked to create some flyers that we can use for promoting the facility. We are putting a link on the website where families that are looking for a tuition-based program can submit their information, and Ms. Duncan can work with connecting those families and getting them enrolled into a program. We're promoting through community newsletter, looking at doing some paid advertising through local media outlets, using social media, and then really trying to target certain families and populations with that marketing as well.
And so with that, it's anticipated that the team will be coming back throughout to give you all updates on where we are with enrollment. The exciting piece is that Shanner will provide two hundred and seventy additional available slots for families in Shawnee County to be able to have a tuition-based place. We don't know how large or small we'll start, but we know that we right now have two hundred and twenty-one on the waiting list, but those are for people who have the qualifiers already. So as we open up a tuition-based space, two hundred and seventy vacancies that will be available, and we'll be bringing this back to you. Ms. Neufeld doesn't actually start till July, so she's been coming in on Tuesdays and tonight so that you can meet her. And if there are any questions for any members of the team, as they're kind of doing some pre-work to get ready, we turn it over to the board for those questions.
Questions? Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm excited to see that, I always love when we do this every single year. I will admit, one of the reasons why I ran up at this office is I thought early childhood education probably is our best investment that we've got, it's our best tool really for eliminating the achievement gap. I am so excited to see us do this. I'm specifically excited to see Shanner, because we talked for a long, long, long time about what it would take to expand capacity at the early childhood level. We arrived at the position that we needed an additional facility, an additional space. So actually seeing this happen, you know, was, don't let my affect fool you, I'm super excited about it. And the fact that, you know, this is really all done for us because our patrons had so much faith, and they believed in this cause as well. They cared about all of our students as well that were doing this, because they voted and they put their ante on the line, and now we get to do this for all of the kids and put ours on the line. So thank you all for what you do. I guess if I had any questions at all, they might be for Ms. Norton and for Ms. Neufeld. Do you foresee any changes coming down the line with Head Start programs, coming from the federal, any additional federal direction, or whether it's kind of a Region Seven specific thing, or how are we doing?
Everything seems on track, and from what I'm learning...
Can you speak directly to the microphone, because it's being taken, they won't be able to hear you?
Yes.
Is it on? No? Okay. From what I'm learning, we're on track, we're following all the compliance, we're meeting all of the goals that we've set for this year. Ms. Neufeld and I are going to be working with Ms. Sharp to continue to learn and grow in our area to make sure that everything is meeting standards.
Okay. Well, so I noticed that the number was two hundred and ten now?
For Sheldon?
Because I think, I thought at one point it was like two hundred and sixteen, or because we used to be four hundred and twelve or whatever, and they cut us back, and we went full days, and it dropped. So I guess for some reason I thought it was more than two ten even still, and I'm very capable of forgetting, so.
Ms. Sharp, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
That was the information that Ms. Duncan has shared with me. To go back and research the number of slots over time, I would have to look into that and get back with you, but that is the projected number of slots for next year.
And since I've been here, it's been right around two hundred and twenty-one, somewhere in between that number and what's up top. Ms. Neufeld, is there anything you wanted to add regarding Head Start?
On May 1st, we are going to be meeting with Head Start and just discuss future plans and how everything's going and what they look forward to seeing with our program, and so we'll learn some more information at that meeting.
Okay. Last question I have is not a question anybody probably can answer just yet, we won't know until it's time next year, until everything's already, the deck's already shuffled in terms of enrollment. But I remember as a part of our strategic plan, one of the things we did a couple of, I guess, six or seven years ago, was we put together kind of zones in terms of coverage for early childhood with the goal of trying to have universality in terms of offerings. And I'll be curious to see, you know, with the addition of these two hundred and seventy spots, where we end up in terms of all of those zones having real, affordable, equitable options for parents. I suspect we're going to be in very good shape, and that's a really exciting thing, and I just want to thank you guys for your work.
Ms. Kirk?
The program at Sheldon was being marketed towards our teachers who have children. Shanner, I'm sorry, Sheldon, I'm Houston, it's on Sheldon. For Shanner, we'll have slots for encouraging, marketing towards our teachers for their kids. I know we have a waiting list for the one program we had over, but anyway, yeah.
We do have targeted tuition spots, even in some of our elementary schools where there's a state pre-K room, there's a certain number of those slots that are allotted for tuition based, and we are working to recruit more students to fill those slots. I know that, again, communications and Ms. Nolan in HR was going to put together some information about promoting that amongst our staff and making sure that staff is aware of those available spots.
Now, the wonderful thing this year, I asked for two schools to pilot tuition-based at their school, so I think that kind of gets to your piece about McCarter and Jardine, and it became popular enough that teachers have asked if they could remain at their home school with their child attending their home school, all of which are possibilities we are now exploring. But now in our packages of pro-recruitment, we'll be, we're able to add Shanner as one of our other benefits that other districts may not provide, that we provide, given that the tuition for teachers is reduced, a little bit lower than what you would find in the world else in Shawnee County. So we're excited about that extra benefit.
Any other questions? We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We are now ready for discussion items, and first up on the discussion items is DCAC Committee Report. So would you all introduce yourselves as you go through this?
Good evening. My name is Daniel Odom, I'm here representing DCAC. I guess I should introduce yourselves.
My name is Lisa Kla, and I am the secretary for DCAC, and I represent McKecon Elementary School. I have a fourth grader there, and my daughter is in her second year of the preschool individual program there.
My name is Tracy Routson. I have a ninth grader at Topeka High School.
I'm Barbara Coltis, and I have a sophomore at Topeka West.
My name is Robert Sanders, and I am vice president, and I represent the community.
All right, thank you. So this evening, I did want to say we were all, you know, very, very happy to be here. These few minutes we get at the end of the school year here at the board meetings sort of represent the culmination of our school year's work, you know, with the subcommittee. And so this year, our topic was on fundraising and solicitation in the schools. It was a sort of a broad topic, so we chose to, you know, to follow, you know, we're looking at the current practices, both what we do here at 501 and also, you know, in other similar school districts, you know, around the state and beyond, to look to see if there are any best practices, things that we might want to follow, and then finally, you know, pull it together if there's any recommendations that we could, we could give to you to consider. And so this evening, we just have a brief presentation, and that will be available for any discussion or questions.
Okay, so the portion of our study topic that I chose to research was different school districts around the Topeka area that were maybe similar in size as our school. So besides looking at our own policies, we looked at Auburn, Washington, Shore, Shawnee Heights, Seaman, and Silver Lake. Based on my, based on my research, it seems like all the districts that I looked at are pretty similar in their policies than what we have as well in our own school district. However, Seaman School District was a little different because they actually went into a little bit greater detail. They actually had five categories of, when it came to fundraising, and so they broke it down to, so category one has to do with fundraising activities by school sanctioned groups, so like your PTO groups, or students that involve, or that involve students selling in a manner to the general community. So for instance, it'd be like carnivals, pancake feeds, chili suppers, and then what's interesting is a maximum, a maximum number of two of these fundraisers from this category can only be done in the school year. Category two had to do more on a, was solicitation in nature, it's supporting in the general community with local merchants for selling like advertising space in your books, or like school newspaper, and then also for helping with financial support for like school programs or like class projects, junior achievement, things like that. Category three talked more about making products or services available through like concession stands, and that was something that they could have, you know, you could participate and have as many of those as you want throughout the school, there wasn't like a maximum limitation on that. And then category four was more fundraising projects that are limited to making a profit from a service or product available only to the parents and the students of that school, so like spare items, booster items, things like that. And then finally, the fifth category had to do with sales of items by non-school sanctioned groups, so boy, like the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts, community, community civic groups, like athletic groups, and it said that the district must remain neutral, so they're not allowed, you know, not allowed to endorse a certain group, they just have to remain neutral. And any, in all of these categories, the principal of that school, they have to receive, they have to get permission from that principal before they actually do these things. So I'll switch this over to Tracy, she's going to go over the information that we received from our survey that we sent out in the school district. Thank you.
So we decided to try and find out what Topeka, the Topeka district was doing, so we, obviously we collected a lot of anecdotal evidence from our own PTOs and just amongst ourselves. We did a lot of speaking about our experiences through the various schools, but we did decide to try to get voices from elsewhere by sending out a survey. We had Misty Kruger a couple of times send surveys out to the principals of the various schools and to try to reach out, and however way they thought... schools and to try to reach out in however way they thought was best. And so just kind of going through a little bit about that, we ended up with 386 individuals who responded to us, to the survey. It was sent out by the Burnett Center Administration on behalf of DCAC to building principals. Now, it should note, of the 386, eight were principals, 76 were teachers or staff, 15 were PTO or booster presidents or their delegates. We had said you could do that if they knew more about the fundraising efforts. 199 were parents, one student, which I'm not exactly sure how that happened, but that's okay. And seven identified themselves as others, but then when they identified below, when they said what the other category was, most of those others self-identified then as parents. So it should also be noted, and this is actually really important in all of this, of those 386, over 25% of those came from Topeka West High School. So over 100 of those individuals were from Topeka West. And so when we look at the results there, kind of keep that in mind, because their voices are obviously going to be heard with a greater, greater response. There were 13 schools with zero response, and for us, that was, it was kind of frustrating, to be honest. That meant no one among the building responded at all to the survey. It is possible, and we did want to note, that a lot of the, anecdotally, we had heard that a lot of individuals had planned on putting it out perhaps during the conferences, PTO conferences, and as you know, the Thursday night was snowed out, so that is possible, but Wednesday night was not. So we are trying to figure that out. Previous DCAC studies had actually strongly recommended using multiple methods of communication and trying to reach out to parents, and so this would have been a really good example that perhaps some other types of venues should have been tried to be reached. So as we went through and responded, I'm just going through little snippets. Obviously, in the back of your report, I tried to give you the highlights of the basic survey if you want, but I'll just try to give you some of the key components here. We don't want to make assumptions because we had low participation, so we'll just give you some kind of guidance of what we found. So about 77% responded that they were, they felt they were very clear or mostly clear where fundraising dollars went. We thought this was really important about the transparency of fundraising, because what we did know anecdotally is that if people know where your dollars are going, they're more likely to give you dollars if they know where funds are going to be. We did have some individuals that stated they weren't exactly sure, or that they only liked to participate in things with where there was an item or something at hand. So one particular parent stated, "I do not like fundraisers generally, but we had one with the express purpose of purchasing a 3D printer for the school. A clear objective made participation a worthy effort." So I think that's something for schools to take note of, is that having clear goals in mind and then watching us reach those goals helped participation. Most of the respondents felt the school had either just enough fundraising at 47%, or should be doing more at 16%, but 114 people of 386, which is 38%, felt that there was too much fundraising or solicitation of my money or items at my school. And where this is important is that the majority of the 386, we don't, we don't know, but my guess are these are the individuals that tend to participate anyway, and so that 38% of them are saying it's, it's high, it's too much. I think that's something to kind of take note of. 49% said that they felt that there was a moderate amount of pressure, but 34 said that they felt a lot of pressure to participate. So whether that be building, or buy prizes, or whatever the case may be, there was pressure among the students and the parents, and participating, maybe even from the teachers, to participate in, in these various fundraisers. So respondents often said that they recognize, in fact, because a really large margin, they get that we need fundraisers. There are very few people in any of the respondents, maybe one or two total of 386, that actually said, "Why are we doing this? Just redistribute our money somehow." Everyone gets that they have to find money somehow, and they were very supportive of where the money was going, to fundraisers and trips and other things that they knew that otherwise they might not be able to, to do. They did talk a little bit about it having tied to assemblies, so taking class time out to do assemblies where you show prizes or you try to amp up the group, and there was some, at least anecdotally, in the qualitative section there, were some parents that were concerned about that use. So here's kind of the favorite part. So what do we do? All right, we'll talk about recommendations in here in just a second, but I really like to find out what's going on in the districts. So the favorite fundraisers, and I'm sure it's going to be no surprise, at least I looked at it, I went, "Of course." So the community builders, so the school carnivals, hands down, art auctions, so the schools that do the art auctions got really high praise, bingo nights. I didn't, I didn't know how popular bingo nights were until I, I read this, but people wanted the things that bring us all together. So carnivals, bingos, art auctions, fun runs. So one parent stated, "I prefer fundraisers that bring families and students together because at the middle school level, parents start becoming too disconnected with what is going on at school." Some individuals said they like, they like the dinners, so the one-off nights of going out. This was a little mixed because we also got some negative responses, so a lot of people said, "We have to eat anyway, but why not go out and support the school?" We did have some parents respond, though, "It gets expensive, and we can't always afford it, and then our kids feel like they're missing out." So there's the flip side. Least favorite fundraisers, I don't know, I feel like I should pass the mic, and I'm guessing that we'll hit on them, because there were two that really stood out, and this would be Major Savers, and then one called Red Wheel. Red Wheel, and I, I mention it by name because it was mentioned by name, and these two were mentioned a lot. So by far, and sometimes they were just mentioned as the cards. So the biggest complaints about Major Savers were that it seemed, and it is, that every school and multiple school districts sell sort of the same thing. These are the cards that have the discount meals or discount ideas, buy one, get one, and so it's difficult to find buyers, is their statement, that the cards seem to be decreasing in value over years, so I've heard, you've heard that, and mostly it requires people to buy items that maybe they wouldn't have used normally. So we heard of individuals, households buying their own cards, so the students being told they had to sell one, two, or three of them, and having so much trouble selling them that they were buying them themselves, so one household having three cards, because otherwise they didn't know what to do with them, but they felt the pressure to sell. So that one, that one's a kind of a big deal. So you all have in the report a very lengthy quotation that I will not read, but you are welcome to do so, and if you really want to see it, come ask me. Very passionate about, about why they feel that way. So a lot of the parents hated to disappoint their children when they came home very excited about things like a limo ride or a pizza party, to only find out that it required things that they just didn't feel like they could do. Some statements about door-to-door sales, so, and if you know, if you participate in the door-to-door sales, a lot of times on the packet itself, it'll say, "But don't go door-to-door." So then what do you do if you don't have family members in, in town, and if you do have family members, it means you're hitting them up again and again and again. But if you don't have family members and you don't have a, a parent or a grandparent who works in a location that they're allowed to bring those sheets into their, their work environment, how do you, how do you get to participate? So those students end up feeling left out. One of the other ones that was mentioned, when you have to provide names and addresses of friends, so I guess this was popular at least one school, it was mentioned, so Time for Kids or something along the lines, where people started getting phone calls and mailing from people that had given their names out. That was stressful for some individuals. So at this point, I'm going to hand it off to Barbara Coltes, and she's going to take all of this and provide some recommendations for you all.
All right, we looked at three areas to keep in mind while we made our recommendations. What do we need to fund with, with outside money? Or these are things that the school should be thinking of, too. What puts the least amount of burden for our student population, and how do we minimize the stress and pressure that is felt by students and parents? So we have eight recommendations. One, have the district recommit to providing PTO executive board training to explain fundraising policies. Two, recommend the administration look at current bylaws for fundraising and find ways to encourage transparency. Three, provide an opportunity during enrollment for parents to donate to their schools. Consider listing particular areas of need per, per school with dollar amounts. Four, allow for people to donate online, both for district programs like summer band music and for particular needs within individual schools, like a 3D printer. Five, ask schools to determine primary fundraising goals for the year and include a list in the district calendar or other similar document that parents and guardians are most likely to keep. Number six, aid schools and school organizations in searching and writing for grants. Seven, for the Topeka Public School Foundation, consider an alternative fundraiser, perhaps a district-wide carnival, fun run, art show, or something else that can, that will encourage community building. And eight, allow for a monthly contribution option of support, so if some people would just like to get it all figured out and done with all at once. That covers just about everything. Any questions?
Questions? Dr. McCarty?
I have a quick question, Barbara. In your recommendation number two, when you mentioned bylaws, what, what are you referring to there? PTO bylaws or board policy?
Yeah, it was board policy.
Board policy, so looking at that, looking at that fundraising policy and seeing if it needs to be.
Right, because it was kind of vague and, you know, it just didn't have that much information in it.
Okay, next.
Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. This really will only be two sentences. So I just wanted to thank you all as DCAC members doing the tough work of digging into topics that aren't always fun at first, and there's a ton of work that has to be done. As a former DCAC member, I can tell you, I don't think any of you were, actually, you were, Ms. Coltes, that's right, when, back when I was on.
When you left, I came on.
Yeah, there you go. It's usually how it works. More people come around on it. But the one thing I would, I guess, throw out there as a piece of encouragement is, in every single year that I've been on the board, and this is, we've completed year 10 and then year 11 now, when we've gotten DCAC recommendations back, we've incorporated them, we've actually put them into practice, either in, not always in whole, but in part, for sure. So what you do matters, and we really do appreciate it. I'm one of the parents who gets lots and lots of fundraiser requests, so this one has special interest for me, so thank you.
Dr. Mickelson?
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Just echo those comments of thanks to the DCAC. Reverend Williams and I met at DCAC meeting many years ago and served with some of you. Interestingly, Ms. Routson spends a considerable amount of time raising funds for Topeka High Band and selling spirit wear at basketball games and football games, so it's only appropriate that she served on this committee in this case fundraising. She's, after many years, stepping down of selling t-shirts at Friday nights, I think is what I refer to, for her new chair. But thank you to all of you. I also noticed that in your report that you quoted, you, you said the quote that I picked out when I read this, and that I prefer fundraisers that bring families and students together because at the middle school level, parents start becoming too disconnected with what is going on at school. So that was, when I read this earlier, it was in preparation for a meeting, and that's what I picked out as my favorite highlight of the, of the report, and I think that's words to lies that we ought to take to heart and figure out ways to incorporate that thought in our fundraising. So thank you very much for your.
Ms. Kirk.
Echo what my colleagues are saying here. Thank you for, for your hard work. One of the things I did note, though, is, and it's something that we struggle with here, too, is that all of our schools have different capacities to raise money. I mean, dramatically different capacities, and so, and you did touch on that in here, and that is a biggie. I mean, when you try to figure out, how do we get that money into these schools who don't have those resources? You know, that comes, I think that's, I'll go back to Major Savers again, which is one way that we do that for some of those schools, but it is, it is a big issue. And I'll tell you what, we sit here as a board, and we see this list of donations that we have to approve every, every month at every meeting, and Topeka West, I think, gets the lion's share of it, and that's something extraordinary happens. And, and you sit there and think about that, and I think about all the other schools that, unless there's a special grant from Advisors Excel or something like that, they just don't have any resources, so. That's just my only critique of what you've done. I think it's important what you're talking about. As a grandmother, I even get solicitations from Little Rock, Arkansas, so I want you to know. It's all over the country, but it is an important thing that you've done, so thank you.
I would just comment, too, we actually felt exactly the way that you did. Unfortunately, the turnout was so low for so many of the schools, with 25% of the voice being Topeka West, it was really hard to try to pinpoint from the, we had 10 from Topeka High, and of those 10, I could probably tell you who they were, because I had sent it out to PTO and to BAN backers and to, you know, we had, I mean, but with those, those small numbers from the other, from the schools, and then 13 schools not responding at all. And the representation at DCAC is very similar, where some schools are very, very well represented, in other schools, the voices are just not there. So whatever, as a board or whatever, as a community, we need to do to help raise those voices, and it's so important, and we reckon, I mean, we absolutely want that and recognize that, so I, I appreciate those comments because we felt it, and we just didn't know how else to reach out.
Ms. Johnson?
I'm too thankful for your report, and I dig into here, get a glimpse of it at the DCAC meetings, so I appreciate your work. As Mrs. Kirk will begin to speak, though, I did think about the equity piece, and I'm starting, most of you are representatives, or you are representatives from the school, except for Mrs. Sanders, your community member, but as we had this conversation, I'm wondering, what are you seeing in your building that kind of aligns the directive for, for fundraisers? Because oftentimes, when, when my children were actually in school, thankfully, I don't have that to contend with, except that now everybody thinks that they can ask me to buy a phone, because I don't have any kids in the school. But is there an alignment with what is overall going to happen in the school and what's going to happen for these, each of these groups? Like you do BAN backers, but from a principal level, you know, do they know what's going on with the other groups that are beneath them or, or within the school? And I, and, because these are my asking, because then how can you, that's the only way you can really plan what these opportunities will be and not have people inundated, but then even with that, what are the resources of the families that actually attend the school?
Right, and I think that would be very different at the high school level than even the middle or the elementary, and I've worked in the PTOs for all three areas, and so I could tell you exactly Jardine Middle School's fundraising plan for the entire year, but you have a school like Topeka High that has the backer programs, or Topeka West that has the West Side Pride and their backer type programs and Highland Park, and, you know, so you have those different programs at the high school level. At least with the PTO, we do not hear the fundraising numbers from any of the backer programs, so that is just, they are separate entities, separate bodies. The administration, I was told, they, they do have some kind, they do approve the major fundraisers that go through, at least that's what, what I was told, so I'm going to say that is what happens. So I don't know, does anybody else have?
Well, yeah, I can just, again, it's anecdotal, but, you know, at McCarter, where, which is the school that I represent, both of my kids go there, you know, earlier in this school year, we, you know, this was, of course, before this, the subcommittee, you know, met to prepare this report, but just to sort of move in that direction, we had changed over to a walkathon as our main fall fundraiser, because there were no, there's nothing to sell, exactly. I mean, obviously, it's still a form of fundraising, but it also had the very specific goal of a brand-new sign, which if you've, you know, been to the McCarter campus, you know, you'll see that right up in front, but that, that new sign was paid for, at least in part, by this fundraiser, and that was, you know, something that we could encourage, you know, to the kids, obviously, this is at the elementary school level, but, you know, anyone who participated in that walkathon, you know, went around our brand-new gym, you know, could have some sense of ownership in that, so, so definitely that, that was visible. So that made that, that part of the recommendations, and certainly that, that comment that you pulled out, you know, sort of bringing people together, you know, it's, it's certainly visible, it's, it's something that, that is possible.
Thank you all. We definitely appreciate the work you've done, and we have much to think about. Appreciate your recommendations.
So we really do appreciate what you do, and we really do look at what you present. Your first recommendation is committing training to the PTO executive board, and I totally agree with that, as I... And I totally agree with that, as I was a PTO chair at Topeka High, and that training changed the way we did things at Topeka High with lots of checks and balances. So my question to you all, did you notice that there was a lack of checks and balances in some of the fundraising activities?
So this actually came about, so a few years ago, one of the DCAC recommendations had been PTO training, the annual training. It actually happened. We had a few years where we did get everyone together, the PTO presidents and treasurers came together, and they learned about the double signing of checks and the best practices in fundraising. And then the last couple of years, that hadn't happened. And so our recommendation is to just bring it back and make sure, because I do think that that helps in understanding, when you think about it, when you, and some of that, kind of the common sense, but actually just putting that common sense into practice about how you handle money at a large level, especially when you're dealing with, you know, some of these, some of these schools have thousands of dollars, you know, tens of thousands of dollars of money that runs through that program. And so it's actually bringing back something that we already used to do.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, and we will certainly look to do that. And we really appreciate it. There's no other questions? Thank you again very much.
Next, Dr. McHale. And so Mrs. Wallace will just share the textbook adoption item as a discussion item, and just let you know what materials are available. Ms. Kruger also did bring on the end of the DCAC piece, she did bring the last several topics of DCAC. She has that, so when you get ready to leave, or if she'd like to pass them out now. You just have a listing. Ms. Kruger asked for the listing of past DCAC topics. So Ms. Kruger did a little research. In terms of things that you've acted on, she's going to look further into that, but she did highlight some of the things that you've done in the past, to the point that you mentioned earlier. The textbook adoption piece, Ms. Wallace will give you an overall update and introduce her team members.
Okay. I'd like to introduce the consulting teachers over the areas that we are recommending new textbooks for. And they led their team in many hours of reviewing resources. So we have Nicholas Anderson for secondary science. The unique thing about Nicholas is that he teaches full-time and is functioning as a consulting teacher for science. Cherry Eldal Cruz, our secondary math consulting teacher. Kay Hopkins, PK 12, language arts. And Ms. Yvonne Spalding, PK 5, math. You have the documents, the table that shows you what we're proposing. So I would just ask you if you have any questions.
Could you tell us a little bit about kind of what's changed over the years? I noticed, I mean, some of these adoptions, it's been 10 years. So some of the ways sometimes we put off, correct, is lean funding times is one of the consequences of not getting the funding that we expected from the legislature. Right, this is my memory, that when we got those mid-year budget cuts, sometimes we had to put off an adoption. And so, so over a course of 10 years, what kinds of changes do you see in some of these areas? What are the improvements?
Well, science is, our middle school science program is 10 years old. It is currently FAWSS, which is all hands-on and no textual material. So one of the team's primary desires was to have some kind of textual material. You have samples of both a hardback text that would be provided as a class set, and then what would be student workbook modules that would also, based on principal and committee input, would be purchased as a class set. All of this comes digitally and can be downloaded and used offline.
So if it can be downloaded, that means that whether or not a student has internet at home, they would still be able to work on their textbook at home with their Chromebook.
Both the middle school language arts adoption and the middle school science adoption, HMH has what they call their player, which is the ability to download like a unit at a time, and then do those assignments offline.
And I'm assuming these are all aligned to the state standards?
Yes. The science is aligned to the next-generation science standards. The math is much more rigorous, but aligned with the changes that the state has made.
Is that something that, you know, I know that in the past, sometimes that seems to be something that a textbook company claims to us. So what's our checks and balances?
We do have the checks and balance. The committee went through it. They had a list of the standards. They marked them either as advanced, met, or adequate and/or below, meaning how often they came back around, particularly in language arts, and what depth in which it was covered.
I read online about this, the math curriculum that was chosen, it was universally really highly regarded. That must have been exciting to have that option brought forward to you. I'm wondering, is there anything that any of you would like to add for our information? This is an item that we'll act on at the next meeting, but, so this is kind of our information gathering. Is there anything you'd like us to know about?
Ms. Delacruz, do you want to talk about math?
And each time I talk about Eureka Math, I have to say that. Well, Eureka Math is, or AKA Engage New York, is highly used across the nation, is what Ms. McCarthy mentioned. It does address all the shifts and demands of the Common Core state standards. And one thing that I probably need to add into what you have is that online tools and a lot of technological tools and applications have aligned their curriculum program with Eureka Math. And so there are a lot of resources out there, like, well, free and with subscription, but free is good, like Edulastic, Dreambox, and other online tools. So we're really excited about that. There are also parent materials for, that parents could use, and they can also create an online account through Grade Lines, which is free, and hopefully can help them or support their students at home.
I've noticed it seems like some other districts have moved toward a more integrated curriculum per grade level. So like a math six, math seven, math eight, rather than breaking out particular subjects. Do you see a move towards that, too? Are we going to be changing any way that we approach it?
With the changes in the new Kansas state standards, our committee looked at different possibilities and decided to just stay with traditional standard because that, we think, will like support our kids better than the integrated. We look at data as well across the nation, not nation, but across the state. So we started looking at data across the state, and a lot of schools or districts that use traditional math experienced more success compared to integrated math.
And specifically, all the Shawnee County schools that used integrated math, the applied in scores this past year. So that's an additional piece. Do want to mention Ms. Delacruz, who also teaches at Highland Park in addition to her role. She has embraced fully the, having Algebra I be pushed into some of our middle school and growing that in a way where all students across the district will have that exposure before they get to high school over time. So that's really kind of some of those pieces that teachers along with Delacruz are doing.
I love that, and I love that we're making these decisions based on our data. That's really inspires our confidence. And I love increasing the rigor. I know that having eighth grade algebra is often a predictor of whether a kid goes to college.
Yes, and along with that, we are providing professional learning to our teachers. We have to continually do that coupled with growth mindset, that our students can do this, and we will take them there, and we'll meet them where they're at and slowly take them up where they should be. So hopefully.
Yes. All the materials are also in Spanish, which is one of the criteria that we look forward to make sure that those materials are available as such, because some of your current materials are not available in Spanish, which has created a hardship in past years. So that is another criteria.
Other questions? Ms. Kirk?
Help me out here. You have, I noticed that I'm looking at the math as we're talking about, and then a lot of this have, they have workbook modules. Does that online workbooks, or are these workbooks they have in their hotbed lands?
Well, there is a digitized copy, but there's also a workbook that, like, we're requesting.
So that we'll have to replenish the workbooks every year then?
Yes. The digitized copy is not, it is not one where they get online and utilize it. Teachers can download it, put it in a group classroom, but it is not, at least in Eureka Math, it is a hard copied workbook.
So that's why I say so. Then if we're purchasing workbooks for this program?
Correct.
Okay.
We currently purchase workbooks with our math program.
Just trying to check that out. Thank you.
No other questions? Thank you all.
Thank you.
So we are down to board member comments. Mr. Reverend Williams?
I just want to say thanks to my colleagues for allowing me the opportunity to go to the National School Board Association Conference. Every time I go to these conferences, I learn a lot, networking, meeting people from across the country. And highlighted, I was listening to Terry Bradshaw's Bill O'Sessions speeches. Very inspiring.
Dr. Mickelson? Ms. Johnson? Dr. McHale?
I did want to comment that it was really exciting seeing the bowling team here tonight because I was asking the Topeka West coach how long we had had it in the district. I was pretty sure, and indeed, it was my very first year on the board, was when we decided to put that in place. And I should have asked the kids, I know one thing that really excited about us about adding bowling was we knew it would capture a whole group of kids, probably weren't participating in other things. And you could just see their excitement in being given that team opportunity, their pride in their school, and in each other. Those kids don't always get that chance. So I really hope that, we talked earlier about taking another look at some of those middle school suggestions, at looking at maybe adding soccer at the middle school level, and again, giving kids more of those opportunities. Because in our district especially, I think those extracurricular activities, both sports and fine arts, give kids, they can hook them into a passion and an excitement and a community that helps keep them in school and be successful.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to also thank the board for their support and supporting the Association of School Boards and the National Association of School Boards. I got a chance also with Reverend Williams to travel to the USBA National Conference. Lots of great things I learned. I got to go to one session. So this is the thing, I go to all these sessions, and I look at the titles and descriptions, and I'm expecting to go and hear things and learn things. But, so I went to one on therapy services offered to early childhood education. Guess what they ended up talking about? Well, they also talked about our educational and speech therapy services that you won a MAGNO award. So what they're trying to do is share best practices from all the different districts, but I guess when you're a four-time MAGNO award, I guess a whole bunch of the best practices would have come true to be good. As, I know, as terribly, you know, self-aggrandizing as that sounds, it was actually pretty cool and fascinating to think about the work. It really, it's more about you all. To think about the work that you all do, when I get to have my kids here, you know, to do this. So that was really exciting. I also enjoyed getting a chance to participate in the delegate assembly, and one of the things that came up, that association for the first time talked, we spent considerable time, and actually, it was the second time last year we had kind of a battle, but specifically when it comes to preventing bullying and harassment of our students, who are oftentimes, you know, among the most vulnerable, are LGBT students. That association, for the first time, took a firm stance in saying that we don't allow students to be bullied, students or employees to be bullied, harassed for whatever reason. And it was exciting to get to cast a vote on that. Thank you all for your support of those two associations. And really, we ought to be patting our teachers on the back for granting us so many MAGNO awards. I mean, it was pretty cool to be sitting in this session and be from Topeka, we were talking about these things.
Ms. Kirk?
I had two things, and I gotta remember them both. So when I asked about this report on what, those items of recommendations that DCAC has given us over the years, I don't expect us to go back until the 1970s. I was looking to go back to at least, you know, like in 10 years to see where we have come. And I was just looking here, in the 2007, 2008, we talked about fine arts, and we gave a whole talk on it because we were planning some things. And so that's just, I mean, it's a good place to kind of start. So let's talk about those things that are in the recent past to outline, so that they, and that that report gets to them. I mean, I was hoping that it would happen so they could have it tonight while they were still here.
Ms. Kruger shared she's going to have to do some deep digging to really be as accurate as possible, but she is in the process of that, so she'll have the last five to 10 years for you. But right now, she at least was able to give you an entire history. And that'll be sent to the DCAC, and it'll also be sent to the board. She's working with a DCAC member as well to be as accurate as possible about the recommendation, and we do admit it.
But I think it's, I mean, I think that's, I think sometimes they'll, they'll get discouraged, but we don't, we say we thank the board, but they're not quite sure that we really do what we say we do.
Since we've been on it, we've wanted to do something, but they said every time we went out to DCAC, no strikes against people in the board like that.
None of us were. But I think that's an important piece. Along with, you know, Dr. McCarthy, one of the things that she was talking about was the after-school activities, the special things that we provide for kids, and we talked about the middle school sports problem. And just to give you, I think I shared this with some people, if we, I think we also need to rethink how we can decide whether or not we have a varsity team in every one of our high schools, or a junior varsity. And just, I just want to share with you, attended the Highland Park, Auburn Washburn soccer game. The junior varsity had scored 10 points in about the first seven or eight minutes of the 40-minute. I mean, and those four girls were so frustrated, and it's not fair to them. I mean, and varsity, that was the varsity, I'm sorry. But it was awful for them. And I felt badly because they were trying so hard, but they hadn't had enough opportunity because it's a club sport outside of the school, and you have to have money to play. And I'm telling you, I know from my own children, it's very expensive. And so we just have to do something. You know, if we can't, our varsity girls are going to be embarrassed. You know, if we can't, our varsity girls are going to be embarrassed that badly, not because they're such horrible players, they just haven't had an opportunity. Maybe we need to look at those playing junior varsity players, until they have a chance to build the team for the kids. So, I just want us to think about that. We just, we get such a mindset that you have to build a team. So if you don't have enough kids to do it, or they're not well-trained up to that point, we figure out how we do it, we all have to do varsity to help develop the program. So that's my, that's my question. I mean, I felt so badly for our kids to, they ended the game at the half, because they were so far behind. It was painful for me to watch, so I'm, I can't imagine what it was like for the kids.
Last but not least, I'll just bring you up to date on the intergovernmental council that I go to. This time, they had a report from the Children's Discovery Center, and some of the programs they're doing are pretty incredible. They have a program where they have autistic children come into the Discovery Center and just allow them to play. They have, they're, they're serving lunch at Chesney Park, I'm not going through the summer, I think it might be weekly, and they have groups of people come and look forward to that, that lunch, and they're, they don't care whether they're kids or grownups, they just serve lunch. And it's donated by, like the Hills, those might have donated that food, but I can't, I can't remember for sure. They have a program that's for children in St. Montvale or St. Francis', who basically are undergoing intense chemotherapy and can't get out. So they allow, they bring things to them, they allow them to come to the Discovery Center by themselves, so that they can just play, and they can't be exposed to germs. So that's what's going on at the Children's Discovery Center. And should know that next time, our own Shannon McKenzie is going to discuss early childhood education at the ICC. With that. I'll take a motion for adjournment. Have a motion and second, and discussion. Ready to vote?